Okay, council, are y'all ready?
Yes.
Okay, it is 7:25, we'll call the regular city council meeting to order. We have a few newcomers, so let's begin as usual with the invocation and the pledge. Lord, we gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. We pray especially for those who protect us all, military, law enforcement, first responders, and emergency medical personnel, who protect us abroad and at home. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three on our agenda is public comments. Ms. Nancy, do we have it? Sorry, Ms. Nancy? Ms. Your Honor, Kristy Smith would like to speak.
Kristy Smith, 36620 Canyon Road. So, this has been enjoyable. First of all, y'all scare me with the 21 cent budget. One point is Lori's been working for free 60 hours a week. You have to have administrators go after the grants and the grant funds or you won't continue to get these million dollar grants that we were able to get without a city administrator. The other thing that scares me is, yes, we've had the Ad-Alarm tax with the rise of housing, but we're in a housing collapse. We still have probably 10 homes sitting in Valley Lodge vacant. We have four that look like they're folding into foreclosure, so you won't catch a lot of tax on that, not at a foreclosure rate. They won't be $500,000 and $600,000. And then if I go to roads, she said $800,000 to repair the roads that we've repaired. The thing is, once again, there's three of you on council that have never been through a flood, but many of us have elevated, lifted, spent $500,000 on our houses or more to stay here. I don't want to drive on junk roads. They're beyond junky, they're unsafe, they're a liability. You have to move forward to fix these roads. In a .21, it's not going to work. You're going to be getting loans from banks to do what needs to be done so you don't have a liability. That's your next step if you drop to a 21 cent, to go to banks and get loans to fund your city. That's my thought.
Thank you, Kristy. Nancy, anyone else? Mr. Turner would like to speak. Great. Do you want to wait and speak on the item?
Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind, please.
Sure. Is that it? Okay, great, thank you. Item four, consider and take action on the consent agenda. We have draft minutes from city council August 13th, city council August 6th, and for special meeting, and also August 6th for regular meeting. Council report, council, the payment report, and the year-to-date revenue and expense. Item F for the year-to-date revenue and expense. We will substitute the version that is in your binder with the version that you received in the budget workshop, just because it was updated as of today. The changes made to that report were moving items from miscellaneous category into HR expense regarding our agreement and work with Jamie Wellman and previously with Nate. Do we have a motion?
I need to comment real quick before I make that motion on the payment reports. It's coming out, that 1, 2, 3, 4 from June, and we got 1, 2, 3, 4 power money. This is 5, 6, all from August, so this isn't an accurate June report.
Those are vendors on that last page. I know it's confusing.
That's the alarm and sales tax and mixed everything. CCAD from August in the June report.
You have... Look at this. Okay, I'm sorry, doing this in the wrong way. Do you want to remove the... Is it going with the council report?
Payment report.
All right, we'll remove the payment report and discuss that individually. That leaves items A, B, C, D, and F in consent agenda. Do we have a motion for those? I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Is this... Wait, 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 wait. You jumped over discussion. I just had some questions. Don't... When you move the funds from the miscellaneous category to the HR, do we not need a budget adjustment? There's only $500 in the time.
The budget adjustment will come at the next meeting or future meeting before the end of the fiscal year, and we'll do budget adjustments for anything, including that category. All we've done now is move it for record-keeping in our fund accounting software from a miscellaneous category into a specific category for that.
So you're saying the next meeting we'll do the budget adjustment?
Since there are only three workdays before that meeting, I hope to have it done by then, but I hate to overpromise. For sure, it'll be before we vote on the budget for the fiscal year.
Also, the... On the council report, under facilities, you have $42,952. What is that for?
So Faith, would you like to remove that item from consent so we can discuss it?
I thought that's what we were doing, is discussing the consent agenda.
Now, we're voting on the consent agenda? We're going to pull out the payment report and talk about that separately. If you would like to also remove the council report, we can do that. Philip and Nancy, help me make sure that we do it in the proper order since we already have a motion and a second to accept consent, but we need to remove an item. Remind me the order of managing that open.
Yeah, so the one who gave the motion can amend the motion. So if you want to amend the motion or withdraw the motion, you can.
I can amend it. I can amend it very quickly. Make it easy, just remove D and E. Further discussion.
Okay, so do I need a new second, or we already have a standing second?
No, we will need a new second.
So I need a new second.
I'll second.
Justin will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Manus. So back to item D, the council report. Now, please tell me which item you wanted to ask about.
Sorry, under facilities, the $42,000 charge. What is that for? Remind me. I would think you'd remember that one right off the top.
We've done a lot of things. How far... What page? What pages?
30. Vetro Lavinka, how do you say it?
Yes, Vetro Lavinka is the contractor working on the ARPA project. That's for the first phase of the building.
So the 100-40-52-75 capital improvement, that's where we're putting the ARPA? That's where we're putting those expenses? Why not the 40-50-30? It's building improvement.
Dash 40. It's not on this particular report, but what was the category name that you used?
It was 40-50-30 is building improvement.
Do you have the chart of accounts on the budget? Yeah. I don't even see that as a... 100... 100, 140, 50, 30?
Sorry, that's the wrong one. 5319, sorry, is that 5319.
There's a difference in definition between a building improvement and a capital improvement. And I'm not looking at it right this second, but a capital improvement is a big project, like adding on to the building. A building improvement would be, we need a new, well...
That's where we put the bathroom repair. Aren't we doing that all together in the...
The bathroom budget was established when we thought we were going to pay for that bathroom after the pipes froze on our own, but we've been able to convert that money to a larger project over there, so that's why the bathroom money, there's a chunk of bathroom money that's in a different line item, because it was originally budgeted that way. But you'll see all of these big ARPA draws and the payments for that will stay in this same line item where Vetro Lavinka invoices them.
Okay. Because that would take another budget amendment, right? Because there's only $5,000 on it.
Are you looking in?
It's budgeted, $5,000 for capital improvement.
I don't have this year's budget, right?
Well, I thought this is it.
Where do we put the ARPA? Is that not part of the part one that is in...
This is what she gave us tonight. And it says $5,000. I was just asking if we didn't need a budget adjustment.
So the ARPA money is budgeted in the current year?
Capital improvement's an asset, not an expense. That's what's not on your budget.
Right. That's a better description than I was terminology-wise. I'll also double-check, Faith, and see if it's something that needs to be encumbered, but I don't think so. I'll double-check on that. But what we're... So what we're approving right now is the payment or the... Accepting the report of that thing that had a agreement on that contract.
And other... Something else, on the council report, it... There's so much that we never see. We're just... I never... We never see any of the software charges, the agenda, the software, the fund view software, Archive Social, where the webmaster's paid, Julen, it's never on the council report. Hasn't been for the last year.
You have... So if the payment's not on the monthly report, it didn't come in that month. Maybe they're paying in arrears. Maybe they're, like, for example, Archive Social, I think I said this in the earlier meeting, they just invoiced us for the year last week, so it's not on the report yet because it's not been paid yet.
I bet you it is.
So payroll is not in this report. We talked about that before because it's not a liability. You can see the taxes, payroll tax, but not the actual payroll in this council report. But everybody... Other vendor is listed here by vendor as a cabinet.
She would like to see that sometime.
See what? What we paid Julie. Okay, I think I brought that about two meetings ago, or maybe June, but I'd be happy to bring it back if you'd like.
Is it in our book?
It would be if you left your documents in there.
That was it?
Okay. Any other questions on the...
I have one more.
Council report.
What is... Page 3 on June 11th. What it says, vendor name is General Code Technology, 30% submission of draft. I wish everything was so detailed. The...
You just said the name of it.
The Vetro Lavinka?
No, no, but...
Archive Social.
Archive Social. General Code is Archive Social.
You said you just got an invoice for the whole year from them.
So this was 30% in June, and their remainder of their invoice came in this week.
I know you said this earlier, and I'll just clarify. You said that this one that you gave us at the budget workshop was to replace this, but you realize it's completely different reports, right?
You replaced it with one like it.
Or this one we don't... This is not one we did. We get the council report.
You can look right after the payment report, the revenue and expense.
Okay.
Okay, if you don't mind. We need to finish about the council report first. Do we have any further questions about that one?
On the council report, do we pay payroll taxes and unemployment and federal withholding and social security? Doesn't make sense, but this shows payments for March, April, and June. It shows two paid... Well, you got paid in the top of all of these payments that were... It shows paid, I guess, 6/3, but this is for March 6th.
That's when it was entered into fund view, is my understanding, but I'll keep her in that with Julie if you'd like. That's why she... Over in the description, she put the month that it belongs to, because it's paid in the proper time, but it has to be verified when batches are audited and confirmed, and that's when you see it on the report. And y'all have been asking questions about them, so she went through and made sure they're all there, and that's why the dates are added under the description column.
My God. Phil, killing it over here. That's a $12,000 expense, my friend. Did we get copies of those?
Yes, we did. I mean, you could have them if you wanted.
Okay.
Any other questions on the council report? Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion. Do we have a second?
Are we making a motion on changes? Are we making a motion on...
There are no changes been requested, where we've discussed and answered, and...
Okay.
I mean, Kelly should say, since it's her motion, but I think we are... A motion to accept. Do we need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, let's be manus. All right, the payment report. I'm really sorry, that one was... I think you had a question about that one?
It's completely inaccurate. It was completely written down. Like I mentioned before, it has 1, 2, 3, 4 exactly, payments that showed to be received in the amount of about $700, $800.
I guess on page one it says four items for $867 in total.
Right. And then all of your other revenue streams show to be made in August, but this is a June report. And my other question is...
Do we have this page?
Or the second page? No, this is a June report.
Now, the list that you're asking about.
The second page, June. Shows us first four, and then the last of them, as far as payments are presumed, are all from August. But I have a more specific question. What's that? Cash due from Consolidated Cash at $46,000.
So if you look at the credit column, you could see that this is in credit and debit?
I think she's doubled it, so you see where the mistake might be. That shows we have an income of $93,000, and yet we spent $867 in June.
Well, that's balancing debits and credits in the general ledger. If you look up...
Exactly the same.
Yeah.
She's got it twice, is my point. She has it up here in cash due, and then she has it down here again in cash, so it's...
I do not think it's wrong, but I am also not the finance person, so I'll be happy to ask her to provide us a...
We just need an accurate payment report, because I don't...
I think it's accurate, but I, again, am not the finance person, so let me get the finance person to give you a definition on that. Well, that's permit payments. That came in as permits, and then we received $45,852 on the other item, so we did receive more than $800. But do you kind of make a motion to pull this item?
To pull this item completely, yes.
We have a second? I'll second one. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, thank you. We will get a definition from Julie about the accounting terminology on that. All right, under new business, we are going to take item C. Consider and take action on the preliminary plat submitted for Lamar Consolidated ISD, Campus 8 West. Out of order, you'll take it next. And you're up. I didn't point it out to you, but also for reference, Mr. Thomas, we have the large version on the road. If council needs to take a look at it, welcome to.
So, thank you all very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come in for you. I gave the small version just so you can have some notes to write on, and thank you for bringing the big one up, because I like to have the big sheets. I left an extra one here for you. My name is Lawrence Turner. I'm with Kaluza Incorporated. I'm here tonight to do a presentation for you on Lamar Consolidated Campus Number 8. And I'm going to kind of give you just a little bit of information. It's just a preliminary plat, but this particular project right here, here's FM 359 right here. Here's the county line right here. It's more north of Folscher. Folscher's down there. Here's 1093 right here. Here's 359. If you start here in the north, you'll run into it. This track, again, is right on the county line. It's in your ETJ. It's in the ETJ of your community. And what it is, when you look on the plat, it's a 71 acre, 71.2 acres. And I'm going to start with the overall one right here. So this is the track right here, the 71 acres. Here's Brookshire Creek, kind of going through right here. There's another little drainage ditch right here. This is the county line right here. That's the county line. You have the... Pardon me?
Right on it.
Right, we're on it. We could... LCISD can go any further north, because that's the county line right there. You have an ETJ strip that you all did. Y'all discussed it earlier, and back then, when cousin Burns Turner was talking, City of Houston was coming out here. They were doing some magical things that the legislature had to kind of come in and say, hey, hold on, let's settle it down a little bit. But you all have a strip that comes along here, and it goes along our southern property line here. It's just a strip, and then it goes along 359 right here, and then it goes on the north side of another track that's owned by LCISD. Now, what LCISD is doing now is, well, I can say campus, say, these complexes that they're building now, they'll consist of an elementary school, middle school, junior high, high school. That's the new model that they do. They actually have one now being built over on Bel Air and 723. You've seen it. Yeah, it's almost there. It's being erected right now. So that's their new model. They have that at 7. They have this one, it's number 8 right here. Campus number 9 is over closer towards Rosenberg off of 59 and Spur 10. I don't know if you're familiar with that area right there, but just a little bit south of it, they have the same deal right there. Fort Bend County's growing, they're behind the curve. LCISD is probably one of the fastest communities growing right now. So we have on this side, they're going to have schools on this side, and they're going to also have a high school on the opposite side. That's in Folscher's ETJ. So the project is, we're having to deal with two different governmental agencies. It's all in the county. Just make sure. It's all in the county, so we have to go through the county, but the county recognizes ETJ, and that also requires that the project has to go before your community for your approval. Now, they don't get a building permit from you because it's in the ETJ. You don't issue the building permit, but we need to make sure that all your rules and regulations are followed. We've already submitted copies of this to Craig Calcomine, who's your city engineer. We understand, we know Craig, we've yelled at him before. And so tonight, what we've brought before you is the preliminary plat for the elementary school. It's going to be over on this side. They'll have the elementary school and junior high over here on this side, and then the remaining facilities will be over here on this side. We'll be getting, and we're constructing a street. You can see it better on this one right here, over here. Here's 359 right here. Here's the county line that we talked about earlier, and then here's the ETJ strip that we talked about. It goes along north, then it crosses, and then it goes along the north line of the high school site right here. This is also, they got a lot of development going on over here at the county line. You all have probably noticed that as well. There's a lot of relief on this track, so it made sense on this particular project, we'll build a sub-street right through here, and then it'll dip into a subdivision they call Laurel Farms. And so, you know, obviously, the kids from here will be going to that elementary school. The district has not established any zones or attended zones or anything like that. That's way down the line. We're just trying to get it planted and figure out how to get the school built there. But on this reserve over here, we'll be putting in a school, and then this reserve, which you see here, this is the match line right here, because the county requires it to be drawn at an inch to 100. It doesn't all fit on one page, so here's a little match line, and match lines right here. What we're having, because of the relief, we're putting all the detention requirements right here on this 12-acre track that you see over there. That's where the detention pod will be. There's another little creek that comes through here. Here's Brookshire Creek here. We'll be... We'll also have to go through, like, Fort Bend County Drainage District. They'll have to approve the plat, and so they're requiring that we dedicate the old lightway, which is being dedicated, I think it's like 250 feet through here. There's a little drainage swell that drains some land to the north. It's about 60 feet wide, and then again, to the east of that, is going to be the detention spot. We will be doing some road improvements with them, 359s. Ultimately, ultimately, Ten Shot's going to do some widening on 359, so we're putting some reserves adjoining 359, so when they do get ready to widen their roadway, we'll have those reserves that are already ready. We're also opening building lines where nothing will be in the way as FM 359 winds. There's no infrastructure that has to get relocated. The school will already be sitting in the appropriate spot. This road that I'm talking about, like that, this road I'm talking about here also goes over into Folscher's ETJ as well, so it continues on right here. We'll have a signal light right here at this intersection because it's a school. We're going to have to have a signal light right there. But that's pretty much it right now at this particular time. If you're going to ask me some other additional information, I don't know if it's TMI or what, but... LCISD is wanting to start breaking ground on this site right here next year. And so they're getting after it. That's why we're here before you tonight with preliminary plat. We'll be back if we get consideration, but we would look at coming back with a final plat sometime around first quarter of 2025. But this is just the first step of other steps where you'll get to see me come back again and see you. That's my presentation right now. I'll entertain any questions that you may have of me. I'm going to add one other thing too. Water, sanitary, and drainage. But we talked about drainage. Water, there's an adjoining mud district right here, mud number two fifty-eight. I'm saying the right number. And we're getting water and wastewater from them. They have a water plant right here. We're working out an agreement where we'll get water from them. We even put, if you look right here, we got a little reserve. If they need more space, we're going to give them that corner right there, so they can do any expansion they need on their water plant. We'll bring our sanitary sewer down to here, and if you notice, when you look on your drawing, this turns into a step street. They haven't named it yet, and they actually have a sanitary sewer line that comes on here and goes all the way back to a wastewater treatment plant that's about right there. And so part of our deal is we'll bring all our sewer up to this point, tie into their existing sanitary sewer, and it goes there. So that way we won't have small package plants all over the place. Everything with utilities, you'd like to have regional facility. That's the whole goal. Other than that, that's my presentation. I'll entertain any questions that anybody have of me as it relates to this project or any other question you want to ask me. How tall I am? I'll tell you that.
How tall are you?
Six-seven, three hundred, and now three thirty there.
Just like a man. On their way. The water treatment and the mud district, those are all in Folscher.
They are. They're in Folscher's ETJ. They're not in their city limits. And so your strip, now we're strategic, the founding fathers, they were strategic. That strip comes along here, and you can see it better right here. So you see that strip? You see the little dots that go there? There it goes to the east property line. Basically, the roadway is part of that ETJ strip. They include a little bit more of that really. It comes up to here. Here's one side of the line. There's the other side of the line. Then it goes this way. It's along the north line of our track, which is the county line. You know, that's the county line. And see, there's your hundred-foot strip right there. So really, you're in Waller County with your ETJ right there. Any other questions for me?
You preempted mine with the water and sewer being provided, so thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, any other?
Any other questions? Done a lot of work on.
Yes, sir. We've done a lot of work with LCISD and this whole area.
Alright, Mr. Turner did a great job. Also, you'll see in your packet, counsel, that subdivision development planning application is included. Ready to go. Thank you for giving us the direct description.
Yes, ma'am. Not a problem at all. Thank you for moving me up.
You got it. Phil, I know I didn't ask you this in advance, but just to confirm, we need to take a vote? Do you take action or to approve?
You need action to approve.
Okay. Do I get the preliminary plat? Great, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second. Number of votes? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. You're welcome to stay. I imagine you might have had it off your bill.
No, no, no. I'm used to it.
Thank you again.
Thanks all very much.
Alright, receive, going back to item A, under new business, receive a budget update report. We've just finished budget workshop number three, so most folks in the room heard it in person, but just for a recap for everyone else. And our budget two workshop, council gave direction that their priority is working on zoning for the next fiscal year. Less on roads, more on zoning, so that we can take action on that item that came out of the work with our comprehensive plan. Make sure I include them all. EDCs A and B both met and voted to make no changes to their budget as proposed. In the meeting today, which would be workshop number three, council has proposed looking, considering lowering the tax rate, so ad valorem taxes would be collected at a lower rate. We are at thirty cents right now for the current fiscal year. The proposed rate was the no new revenue rate of thirty point nine. And we are going to look at for our next workshop, versions at twenty-four and twenty-one cents. Here, do not have a consensus of its time, and we will have an update item on the agenda coming up for the publication going out with our no greater than proposed rate. Stay tuned for that. Item B, consider and take action on resolution number twenty-two four dash zero eight. That's resolution of the city of Simonton, Texas acknowledging receipt of certified estimated taxable value and related information. That's from Fort Bend County. Adopting a proposed not-to-exceed tax rate. Scheduling a public hearing for adoption of the proposed tax rate and containing related findings and provisions. Counsel, we talked about this briefly in the budget meeting. We are required to publish a proposed tax rate. And since we don't have a consensus yet on what that rate will be for this year, the resolution will contain the language that this is a proposed tax rate. Proposed combined ad valorem tax rate for twenty-twenty-four not to exceed point three zero nine seven five three for one hundred dollars of assessed valuation.
Philip, is that going to require you doing a new resolution?
No.
No, so the resolution, there's a draft. You just update the number, and so what passes is what passes. The draft is just still in. Your proper document will be signed.
Counsel, do we have a motion for resolution twenty-two four dash zero eight with a rate of not-to-exceed rate of point three zero nine seven five three? Alright, I have Kelly for the motion.
Yes. Now, just a reminder, this is a roll call vote, so we'll have to go by name, and you'll have to either say for, against, present, and not voting, or absent.
Do we have any further discussion? Alright, for the vote, I'll turn it over to Nancy. Councilmember Mathur?
Sorry, if you're for the motion, against the motion, or that could resonate.
Councilmember Cox?
Four.
Councilmember Haley?
Four.
Councilmember Luthra?
Four.
And councilmember Turner?
Four.
If you cancel that unanimous, we will get that published. Alright, item D is road repair report, similar to the budget report of this recap. We had discussion in our previous budget workshop about what it would cost to work on roads, what expenses have been incurred or roadwork has been done in recent years. And so the recap on that is the quarter percent sales tax that is collected by the state and then returned back to the city from twenty eighteen to July of twenty twenty-four totals two hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred seven dollars and seventy-two cents. That's money is dedicated specifically to roads and is not used for any other purpose. And the road projects that have been undertaken in twenty sixteen, I think it was nine roads we said, at a cost of five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, not exactly, but rounding. In twenty eighteen, we had major street repair of Nails, Ash, and Barnes Road, two hundred forty-five thousand. And in twenty nineteen, we did Spur, Longhorn, and Rue, received touchbrushed concrete to improve the condition of non-paid roads. And three properties on Fort Bend received drainage pipes and the material for that at a cost of four thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars and ten cents. That totals eight hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. That would be funded. And an additional project of three hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred ninety dollars was done in twenty twenty, and that was funded by a public assistance grant. So that's one point two million dollars worth of road improvements from twenty sixteen to now. So part of our discussion was what also, what is the estimated lifespan of a blacktop road? That Fort Bend County typically uses ten years as a lifespan for that. Requires ongoing maintenance, maintenance of the ditches or the property that's adjacent to it. And obviously, if you have flooding or big rain events like we have had, Tom, it shortens the life of that.
Do you know what the status is out of curiosity of the one point two million dollar budget that we were anticipating utilizing to help facilitate or grant, excuse me, as a budget? Grant that I think you guys had talked about it not too long ago in reference to it finally funding, or do we have a status?
We don't have an update. They are ready to consider our application. We cannot meet mode of moderate income, so we applied under urgent need. And they have not, to our latest report, started awarding the money for urgent need. We're still waiting to see if we will be awarded for that. There will be some discussion coming up. We have some inspections coming for culverts to go under wagon at the main outfall ditches because those culverts are failing. We've talked about this before, but just as a reminder, since we're talking about roads, we may have to go ahead and move on that and pay for that repair so that we don't have the road fail while we're waiting for that grant. There could be an opportunity that we could add additional roadway to the grant application if we have to take that portion out. We'll find out more about what that might cost and if it's moving, how quickly it's moving to the top of the urgent list. Item six is adjourned to executive session. We don't have an item for that today, so we'll skip over. Item seven and eight are part of that. We'll just move on to item nine for reports. The EDC A and B update is that the boards met, reviewed the budgets, approved them as proposed, and they are included in the budget package for city council to consider in the workshops that are ongoing. Keep Simonton Beautiful has a meeting coming up in September where they will elect officers. They are already moving forward with planning of the Christmas roundup. We have agreement for use of the property again next to Anthony's. We'll keep everybody posted as event planning continues with that and how the council could be involved. The city hall project, the ARCA project that's going on right now, something you could see when you drive up tonight, you can see the new foundation over on the west side. They also have cleaned out the garage from the work that had to be done for plumbing, trenching in there. So they poured that concrete at the same time last Friday. The electrical from the well, this is just an update for council, the electrical from the well to the building was very shallow and it was severed while the excavating was going on. It's been repaired, but you'll see that as a change order in part of the project. The temporary plumbing on the west side of the building, if you've been out there to look, there's a, I don't know how far it is, two feet off the ground or three feet that's been removed from the end of the building. And plumbing has been attached to the side. That's so that the water that runs around behind the building and comes up to supply these restaurants needed to be moved out of the ground because it wasn't deep enough to be under the slab. So temporarily right there, when the construction is done, it'll go over, but you'll not see that. That's just a temporary fix that's out there. And we have discovered that there is a potential leak at the well where the PDC leaves the well and comes towards the building. It might have been there a long time, so we have some bids that will be coming in for repair of that. And let you know if there's anything new, but we uncovered that when we were working on this project. That's it for the building update. Hopefully, we'll see some delivery of red iron and panels pretty soon.
And the EDCs, will they be presenting budget?
You don't mind, I'm going to finish about city hall. Blood paint job, thank you.
Specifically the word fire.
You don't think fire is like this? Yes, you may not be back out for that until it comes to touch up the paint when they repaired them on the back, but I can make that a point. We're open to a volunteer. Somebody can't stand it, look for that. But the paint was the other thing that I was going to mention. So council approved that previously. He has painted the building. It's looking good. And will return once the construction is complete, or at least the back is complete, in order to touch up where the panels get cut off. Make sure that that's a good match. There is a portion of the agreed price that is not going to be paid until that final step is done. It's plugged it up to eighty percent right now. You had a question about, I forgot what.
About EDC A and EDCB boards, when they anticipate, when do they anticipate presenting their budgets to council, so the council can approve them?
The EDC boards are not coming to present their budgets. They are, have submitted it via your budget so that council can approve it or changes do it, but the boards themselves do not have any material changes they'd like to make because they want to wait until projects are developed further.
So we're not paying for roads or ARCA projects and stuff like that out of their money?
No.
That's, we've got to do the budget amendment because we didn't do the right amount of money out of EDC A versus EDCB. They only had forty-six thousand dollars in there, and we gave them seventy-six.
So that money will be part of the adjustment that's made when we do all of our budget adjustments at once? I think we just talked about that that will happen hopefully on Tuesday, but it might be the following meeting, the regular meeting in September. Just based on a number of workdays left.
Ultimately, that approval needs to come from council. Therefore, EDC needs to approve, or present, you do not approve. EDC needs to present their budget so that council can approve it. Both of them do.
So the EDC budgets are in the master budget that council has already have under consideration?
Yeah, but they haven't been presented at all. So, I mean, how do we know? If they want to, if we want to fund a future project and we want to do it out of EDC funds, then that would, that would, we would need to allocate those funds. And in order to do that, they would present to council their budget.
They're not presenting any projects because they're too early in their development to have projects ready to go. They are, have submitted their budget based on the anticipated income that comes from sales tax. And those numbers come from Fort Bend County, so they're plugged in, and it's in your packet.
I know, but they still have a budget to work with. And like we paid for, again, part of that project, part of the ARCA project out of their budget, it is still a necessity for us to be able to approve, uh, council anyway, to approve what they spend their money on.
Well, they're not proposing anything other than your budget for next year, so.
So how are we paying for roads? How are we paying for something? Is EDC not doing that?
No. There's some stuff to the council, and you know where the council budget, or if somewhere there is a recommendation council would like to make for the EDC budget where it's appropriate to spend EDC money for that. We'll go back to it.
Well, it's listed in your budget as, as EDC's having a portion of that, as well as, again, As well as, again, they, they, they are required to present council with budgets. And then council approves said budgets so that we know how to budget ours properly.
Not really sure how else to state that their.
All the corporations.
That their budget is within the that you are working with. That council is working with to approve the ultimate budget.
Right, but.
So if council wants to propose a change to what they have, you're welcome to do that, but there's no schedule at this point for someone from each board to come and hand over their budget.
Phil, it might probably crazy, but that's legally the way it's supposed to work, isn't it?
Well, their budget has been presented and it's in the council.
It was not in my packet. I got it off the city website Friday night. We've never been, we've never talked to EDCs about budgeting. We've never talked as a group here either as what we would like to, that money's just kind of been there. And then up until last year when they were reformed, obviously, this one it was done. But all, all of the, the finance corporation, the EDC A, the EDC B, Keeping Simonton Beautiful, even emergency management, should all at one point or another, if they have working budgets, present to council so that we can approve them. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
You have the EDC budgets in your packet?
No, I don't.
Where you do.
No, I don't. It's a number, it's a number that says this is what they want in their budget because they get it from the sales tax. They have not yet come to us and said, this is why we want this money and this is why we would like to spend it on.
Okay, how about a remedy? I will be happy to email council the budgets that they approved. Their minutes have not been ratified yet, so it's not published. The minutes are not on the website. But I'd be happy to email you each a copy of it if you'd like to look at it separately from the budget package that we're working on in our workshops. Would that give you what your?
No.
Your attorney has just said they don't legally have to understand each.
It just said they did.
It says it needs to be provided and it is presented.
But I don't have, I don't have a, I have a number. I have a one hundred percent number that just says the quarter percent tax that they get, or the percentage of the tax is not quarter percent speaking. Um, but it just says that number is going into EDC account. We have absolutely never been presented any kind of budget, not for anything, not for the finance corporation, not for EDC A, EDC B, Keeping Simonton Beautiful or anything like that.
I'm, I'm, I'll take a look at what's been presented. I don't, I don't have it in front of me, or I may have it in front of me, but I'll take a look.
And it's Keep Simonton Beautiful, not keeping.
Listen, on, on the budget, though, it doesn't say Keep Simonton Beautiful is all zeros. Is that its budget still?
No. Nope, and I can send that to you and then we'll talk about it more in depth on Tuesday. So we can go through it line by line. How about that? All right, couple of other just small updates for council. We had a request from a resident on East Longhorn about pothole repair. I'm just bringing it up to let you know Fort Ben County has already been out there and regraded that road. That segment of Longhorn is not paved any longer and it has not been on the list. It's been compaved at that end because it is so close to the part that's falling in the river. But it has been regraded as a result of significant pothole issues that they had. They requested it last week. It's already been accomplished. And on, I'm sorry, I just said that backwards, I think. It's on East Longhorn. On West Longhorn, we also had a request for a more permanent or stable barricade to keep people from not seeing it if they drive at night because it has been a pretty big, huge one, but it blows over when the wind is high. So a resident made that request and that permanent or more permanent barricade is being installed by the end of this week. So many thanks to Fort Ben County for that quick response. Uh, Nancy, do you have anything for reports? To your own, thank you, thank you. Um, Phil, anything for you?
Thank you.
Counsel, anyone have a report?
I don't have a report. I have a question, possibly.
Okay.
Um, driving through the neighborhood, I've noticed, um, streets like this. What is the proper way of getting that addressed?
We make a request, um, city hall to Fort Ben County Road and Woodage. What's needed is someone or a team to go out and make a list of the ones that are damaged, the ones that are missing, poles that are down, and addressing other placement. It's a manpower. If council members wanted to volunteer?
I will volunteer for that.
That would be great. And we'll submit it to the county and get a timeline of what it would take to produce them, and then they come out and do the installations.
I do have one thing that I'd like to bring to council's attention. I am gonna ask publicly that Texas Pride will be put under RFP or we put, put out an RFP because it is out of control.
Have any of those people called you? See calls, I think, and official.
Yes, they have, actually. So if, if you're not getting the calls, you're not getting the calls, but I can tell you it's, it's, when the city is.
Okay, well, how about since it's not on the agenda, we can't discuss it, but I'll take your note about putting it on a future agenda for RFP to go.
This is the third time I've asked, so if you could.
I'm really sorry, Courtney. I had also explained that we went out for RFP a year ago and then it calmed down because they did a significant improvement on their collection rates. And we haven't had, I've, I've heard of one complaint since then by Facebook, although it wasn't directed to me. And on investigation, that was a resident issue and not this selection issue. So if anybody hears of another complaint, please feel free to let me know. I'm happy to follow up on each one.
The problem that you have now is that.
Put it on an item for a future agenda.
There's a company out of Sealy that is servicing over four homes.
We can't go any further into the.
I'm just saying, as far as code enforcement is concerned, you have a company out of Sealy coming into our.
Councilmember Cox, this is not on the agenda, so we can't discuss any further, but I'll be happy to put it on the future agenda. And with that, we will adjourn at eight twenty two.